Found the city. Cabot, Arkansas, city council meeting Tuesday night. How y'all doing, gentlemen? I guess this is where the meeting is?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're at the wrong walk.
Happy Monday. Yes, everybody on Tuesday, all day, all day.
It's a meeting.
Absolutely, yes, down there on the right.
All right, thank you. How y'all doing? Any place I can have to set up with the cameras?
Uh, not sure.
Just anywhere. Is this the live stream? I watch y'all. Truck drivers on the road a lot, so I watch your YouTube channel. You may send me a comment once in a while.
Happy Father's, thank you for the gift of life and your abundant blessings. Thank you for our beloved United States, whose birthday we're celebrating over this past weekend, and for the freedoms we enjoy and cherish. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. I ask that you give us the wisdom to guide us, to be the leaders our city needs. Help us to build a community worthy of your grace. Help each of us here tonight to act with character and conviction, and help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and respect. Father, please wrap your loving arms around our military and our first responders. Pray that you please protect them from all harm. Please forgive me, Father, for my failure in asking all these things. In the name of your holy, precious Son.
United States of America, the republic always stands one nation, united as one. Israel, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Tammy?
Long.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Red.
Here.
Ellenberg.
Here.
Coe.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Here.
Everyone is present today, that was a vote that was roll call. For those of you who are listening intensely, that word. Next item is presentation to Samuel Rogers, Eagle Scout recipient. If you'd come up, Samuel? It's with my great honor to honor Samuel Rogers for becoming an Eagle Scout. Whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices of their lifetimes by instilling in them values of the scout oath and law. And the destination of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement in the Boy Scouting Program, which was founded in 1910, over a hundred years ago. And the Boy Scouts are granted this distinguished rank. And Samuel Rogers, a member of Boy Scout Troop 23 here at Cabot, Arkansas, has completed the requirements and was examined by the Eagle Scout Order Review, which found him worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout for June 14th, 2021. And the Boy Scouts of America encourages Eagle Scout candidates to complete worthy projects to improve their neighborhoods and their communities. And Samuel's Eagle Scout project consists of building a Gaga pit for his church. Fellowship Bible Church in Jackson, Arkansas. Gaga Ball, Gaga. Gaga Ball is a game that all kids can play, and this pit will allow the kids in this church community to play a fun game. The Gaga pit is portable, allowing the church to move and deploy it when needed. Samuel serves as example to the youth of our community through his high level of personal achievement, leadership, and community service, and has made the city of Cabot very proud. So therefore, I can concur, Mayor of Cabot, Arkansas, if you hereby recognize and congratulate Samuel Rogers for his outstanding accomplishment, and extend to him our deepest appreciation for all his dedicated work, and wish him the best in all his future endeavors. Let's give a round of applause. Okay, our next item is to read ordinance and some resolutions by title only. Any action? Motion that we read ordinance or resolutions by title only. Sorry, I got a motion by Michael. And a second by Stephen Redd to read ordinance or resolutions by title only. Any, any discussion? See none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Here, I mean, yes.
Wayman.
That's what the audience notes, because he's all dressed up in spiffy. I had to look at him twice. It did, it truly did. Uh, City Council, O business, I don't show any, anyone from the council having? City Council, New business, item A, please, Tammy?
Ordinance number seventeen of 2021, in order to rezone the real property reference here in the city of Cabot, Monoc County, Arkansas, from R-1 to R-4M with special use, amending the land use plan and further purposes. First reading.
Council, any action?
No action, but I had a question.
Sure.
What is the special use, how do you define that?
Laura.
This was that last month's planning commission meeting. The, um, the property, the property owners, the petitioners for the rezon, they are building a, um, facility for, every time I have to use this part, because it's in our code, it's for an institutional facility. Even though they don't like that name, because that's what they're trying to get away from, but it's in our code for them to have this facility, they're classified as a large institution.
It's the pediatric, whatever it is.
Yes, pediatric plus facilities, moving, going to build a large facility on the property that is going to be for autism.
Thank you.
See no further action, uh, item B, please, Tammy?
Ordinance number eighteen of 2021, in order to creating, certifying, and confirming tax liens against real properties at various locations within the city of Cabot for funds expended to pay for services rendered due to code violations and further purposes. First reading.
Make a motion, Mr. Smith, and second, third reading, ordinance number eighteen, twenty five one, second.
I got a motion from Ed, second by James Reed, to expand the second and third reading of ordinance number eighteen of 2021. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen of 2021.
Second.
I got a motion from Ed, second from Michael, to adopt ordinance number eighteen of 2021. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Pete Mercy calls in.
Laura, it's not necessary, you're going to thirty days, you've got plenty of time, don't you?
Like, second, right? Like, sir. Uh, item C, please, Tammy?
Ordinance number nineteen of 2021, in order to appoint James Connect to the Cabot Planning Commission declaring an emergency and further purposes. First reading.
I make a motion to suspend the second and third reading.
I'll say it.
I got a motion for Brandon, uh, second from Ed, to suspend the second and third reading of ordinance number nineteen of 2021. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Make a motion to adopt number nineteen of 2021.
I'll say it.
I got a motion from Ed, second from Brandon, to adopt ordinance nineteen of 2021. Nineteen of 2021, any discussion?
Mayor, will you help me for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Mac, um, I don't know you. Uh, in fact, I mispronounced your name as we did when I was asking some questions about Thursday, I have no real big personal relationship with you. So what I'm about to say is nothing personal, okay? Um, and I'll try to keep this as reader's digest as I can. Many years ago, uh, when I started getting plugged in to the goings on and happenings of Cabot, um, it became very obvious to me that there was a prevailing good old boy network at Raines Town. As I started observing planning commission meetings, um, I actually witnessed some of the favoritism that went on, I scratch your back, you scratch mine, which included a number of variances and waivers approved by commissioners who were Realtors, builders, and developers on our planning commission. And again, this is nothing against you, sir. This also bled over into our public works and our inspections. Um, there were favors, turning full on die. Um, in two thousand, I was appointed to the planning commission, had a front row seat, and witnessed a lot of these terrible occurrences, and I got to deal with some of those characters and the problems. We had a deliberate effort to remove builders, developers, and Realtors from the planning commission because of some of the silly stuff that was going on. Uh, we drew a red line for our public works inspections, that they were to enforce the code. When I was elected to city council, I swore that I would never vote to approve another builder, Realtor, or developer to the planning commission. If you're approved, Mr. Connect, you'll probably be the best commissioner we've ever had. If there's anything that may seem to be a conflict, you'll accuse yourself, but this is a vote purely on principle and convictions, and based on past experience, I cannot vote for you. So, uh, if you are approved, I will shake your hand and wish you well.
Good morning, Mr. Long, or is there, oh, that'll be better. Any further discussions? See none? What's the motion according to you?
To adopt ordinance number nineteen of 2021.
Okay, uh, ordinance is to adopt number nineteen of 2021. Roll call, please, Tammy?
Wayman. Wayman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Red?
Yes.
Ellenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Passes seven one.
Mayor, this is one that we do need to put the emergency clause on, since we have two vacancies on our commission, so I make the motion that we adopt the emergency clause for ordinance number nineteen and twenty one, based on the fact that the commission needs to be a full complement. I'll say it.
I got a motion from Ed, a second by James, to adopt the mercy calls on ordinance number nineteen of 2021. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Wayman. Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Next item, item D, ordinance number twenty of 2021.
Ordinance number twenty of 2021, in order to appoint Matt Mowley to the Cabot Planning Commission declaring an emergency and further purposes. First reading.
Mayor, I'd like to have a quick question, if you'd like to read the second and third reading. I'll say it.
Got a motion from, uh, James, a second from Stephen, to wait the second, third reading of ordinance number twenty of 2021. Any discussion? See none, roll call, please, Tammy?
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Motion to adopt ordinance number twenty of 2021.
I'll say it.
I got a motion from Matt, second by James, to adopt ordinance twenty, twenty, twenty one. Any discussion? See none, roll call, please, Tammy?
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Passes eight zero.
Mayor, again, saying emergency call, sign reasonably, sign reasonably. Make a motion that we adopt the emergency clause for ordinance number twenty, twenty one.
I'll say it.
I got a motion by Ed, a second by Brandon, to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance number twenty of 2021. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. This is next item, item D, I will accuse myself of leaving the table. President Portail, Ed, would you leave the meeting?
Yes, sir. Tammy, I'd like to record the mayor has left the meeting at this time. I don't have my watch, but I've got it. Takes too long to get it out.
Seven twenty eight.
Would you read ordinance twenty one, please?
Ordinance number twenty one of 2021, in order to accepting the authorization of certain territory referred to as Lot One, the Woodlands Headhunter Chase, to the city of Cabot, Arkansas, and making that territory part of the city of Cabot, Arkansas, assigning the annexed property to a ward, zoning the annexed property, and further purposes. First reading.
Any action, council? Uh, I'm, 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 I have a motion, please, second and third reading, but then, I have a question. Have a motion, Tammy? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, I have a motion from James, a second from Michael. Ordinance twenty one of twenty one. Roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Any other action? I made a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty one, twenty one. I have a motion from James to adopt, uh, a second.
Second.
I have a second from Michael. Roll call, Tammy?
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yeah.
Coe.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just one more question. Are y'all gonna be part of the P O A at Thunder Chase? That we're not part of Thunder Chase. We won't be part of Woodlands. They only have a P O A.
Thank you, ma'am. Continue, roll call.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
I can twiddle the action on this. Uh, Ben, am I correct, we, we can wait a second, third reading on the petition, but we cannot adopt the emergency clause, is that not correct?
On the accusation, wait, on this accusation, may not adopt emergency clause, or they mandatory by statute, thirty eight.
That's, uh, thank you. Tammy, show the mayor three times, please.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Next item, item F, resolution number forty of 2021.
Resolution number forty of 2021, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage, and Tourism for assistance to develop recreational facilities and further purposes.
I motion we adopt the resolution forty, permission.
I'll say it.
I got a motion from Michael, second from James, to adopt resolution number forty of twenty one. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Make a motion to adopt forty one of twenty one.
Second.
I got a motion by Ed, a second from Matt Weber, to adopt resolution number forty one of twenty one. Any discussions? All in favor, roll call, please, Tammy?
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Passes eight zero. Next item, item H, resolution number forty two of twenty one.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk treasurer to enter to an agreement with the American Legion Post number seventy one.
Make a motion to adopt resolution forty one, twenty three, forty.
Yes, sir.
I'll say it.
I got a motion by Ed, a second by Brandon, to adopt resolution number forty two of twenty one. Any discussion? See none, roll call, please, Tammy?
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Ellenberg.
Thank you, passes eight zero. Uh, now it's time for your community input. Uh, you may come to the podium, state your name and your purpose. Come on up, sir.
Great American, American Union. I might have been living over in college, and I talked with Dr. Cabot, and in the St. John, um, Seton Street, about a block towards St. John's, there's a ditch, said over there a motorcycle, Dr. General, uh, from that, the old taxi person. It goes a really wide, two and a half feet deep, about six foot deep, as deep as a trailer. I know the city's aware of it, because city police out there, it leaves once a month. Wreckers out there, it leaves once a month. And what I'm meaning to do really now, is there's a couple of young ladies who just graduated high school, this weekend, was turning around the old parking lot, taking breaks. Thank goodness, they backed up slowly, they mopped them out, and they're tired, first about six foot off frame. They could not see the ditch because of the grass. There's no shoulder, there's no warning, no nothing. It is very dangerous. If somebody comes in there on a motorcycle, one of them passed, and gets that ditch, they're gonna have a problem. I would just like the state of the city, do something out there. Now, the big work was mentioned earlier this morning, and I'll say one, before it comes out of that, in fact, to prove they might be able to get a guardrail in there. I don't know if I got that much time.
I think we do it with the guardrail up. I think, uh, clearly talk to you, what you meant to say is the work, and range to that area, so that ditch will be addressed, but it's not gonna go away.
Well, I should have that been signed.
Uh, sure.
Move the grass, I believe you're blocking the grass. I said this morning, I know, but John, I didn't like it. Bruce, oh, all right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Bruce. So can I guardrail put up now, or?
Let's look at it, see if we can bring it to it, or, or, or. Cause, I, we have, it's not an issue of participation, or that is the reason.
And then it's so close to the state highway, we have to ask our, uh, approval for our guardrail. It's not easy to, uh, guardrail. So, but we can, we can do a sign on there or something, but we. Put his own, I promise.
I mean, what's the, what's the dollar amount it's like, delivering?
Delivering the ditch.
We're already addressing drainage, but there ain't, but it's not like.
That ditch has so much water, everything from St. John, we have our history, go with that.
You know, we have to do under the ground drainage or something like they're doing on the new highway, but we haven't seen what that's gonna be like, with the bomb.
We'll have to look at the engineering, see if we can.
Which will be addressed upon access, you were, it's very great. Cause this is gonna be cheap.
But, this gentleman here is breaking, he says, um, that it is an issue. I can actually start, well, I live right on St. John Street myself, in the curb on that, in, uh, St. John Street, so that's exactly what you're talking about, it's been a problem, through years, it's bad. I mean, it's, and, and as well, um, um, so, yeah.
One, one type of accident, and he did not mention other layers, we had, uh, I know at least one, and thank God, these, uh, people always.
I mean, just, what, fifteen hundred dollar case?
Well, actually, I was thinking a lot more, that's not that bad, really, or something like that. We'll see what they got over here. Cabot Sports Place, I think this is, uh, I think this is gonna be in the bond issue. Fiber and internet office. Cabot Fire and Police Training Facility. Need all that? Uh, I don't know. Here's, uh, Cabot Sports Place, Sports Place, upgraded turf fields. Sure, that is. Cabot Animal Support Services and Education Center. Fire Training Center, I guess. Splash Bag. Cabot Parks and.
Cabot Person Rec. Uh, piece of playground on the splash pad. Alright, nice. We don't have a truck. There's a Training Park, Training Center. And it's nice. Community Services and Food, pantry, alright. I guess that's a splash thing. That's it for the meeting. I enjoyed it. Let's get out of here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think this is the way I came in, I believe. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Pull it down a little bit, not much. This is the Veterans Community Events Center, where they hold their city meetings, city council meetings. And not bad, pretty good deal. Parks and Rec, I guess it's Parking Rec Center thing. That's where they hold the meetings. I'm gonna get out of here. My batteries are running low. Got a trek, let's get back to the house. So maybe we'll see some. Cop bots on the way home. That'd be cool. Alright.